Welcome to tonight's meeting, pre-meeting, December 19th, 2022, our last meeting for the year. I didn't see any questions for night's agenda, except for Mr. Baker's. But you just have first round is general, what you've been doing or anything to report? Mayor Protem raised this figure, so I'll let you gather your thoughts.
I attended inclusivity board on Wednesday. They, a few things, they adopted a statement about the Club Q shooting that I anticipate will be sent over to us. I saw original draft, I didn't see the one that they actually approved. Then the other thing that they had a councilperson or the mayor pro tem from Aurora joined to talk about diapers and feminine products being excluded from sales tax. And so he showed what, kind of what they had went through in order to do that. I don't remember the dollar amount, but it would be different for us, obviously, because I think their sales taxes, I'm like 3.2%. So that is something that I think that they're interested in us looking at. I don't know if they're planning on bringing a formal proposal or what. I know that I provided to them the list of items, this had come up probably, I want to say it was almost a year ago. But Barbara had given me a list of, or given me the link to the, what was excluded already. So I provided that to them as, so that they could look over what we already exclude from sales tax. So I don't know if that's something we would want to preemptively provide some numbers, just because I know that they're gonna be asking for it. And I just will share some of the things that the mayor pro tem from Aurora shared. There was a lot of discussions about where do you draw the line and what is appropriate, what's not appropriate. You know, and I didn't really engage in the discussion, I just listened to theirs and reported back. And we'll see, you know, what, what else they bring forward with it. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up to you guys is I had worked with Justin Davis and Cody to make sure that there was a certificate given to Beth Bishop. She was one of the founding members of the group and this was her last meeting. And so we thought it was appropriate to acknowledge her service. So that was it for me.
You don't want to tell us?
No, I'm trying to remember what was until we left. No, that's this week and it's more of a perfunctory meeting just to, out of family for Dr. Cobb. And so it's pretty uneventful. Not very exciting.
I had a question on the agenda. So the lease that we're renewing for one year, why is it one and not, so the PVS was five, but this is a month-to-month one? Why isn't that longer?
I see somebody genuinely coming down.
Love the both.
My name is Tomas Reda Mishler, Director of Parks Recreation and Libraries. Great question. We're in the midst of negotiating a new sort of umbrella IGA with Highland Hills. We expect to get it done this coming calendar year. And so they wanted to just extend it for this one year while we're kind of negotiating agreement. And then we'll do, it'll be part of the master agreement.
Okay, so there's no issues?
No.
Okay.
I would just add, I did speak briefly to the Highland Hills attorneys. And their request was for the 12-month extension while they, and I don't know if it's the IGA or they're just trying to evaluate going forward that space. That would be the same provider after next year.
I think, yeah, there might be, they might do a, it kind of depends on what we, how we come down on the agreement that they, the I- center. The I- center was just paid off the debt after 25 years. So it changes the economics nicely in our paper.
And rebuild with the floor, because I don't know how many times we had been, I could have told them that. Counselor Seawar.
I attended the Westminster Chamber Government Affairs Committee along with Mayor Protem. Of course, he was on and then my computer got down because I forgot to charge it, details like that. That's their monthly meeting. Was fortunate enough to attend Parks Rec Library Open Space End of Year Celebration Tuesday evening. Wednesday was along with Mayor McNally at Westminster Public Schools Foundation Reception at Mangrave Center on 72nd. And got a chance to go to the shops party, that's the first one I made it to because of COVID. That was fabulous, really enjoyed that. And also along with Mayor, Mayor Protem on Friday afternoon, St. Anthony's North Hospital Expansion, great, great project. So that was great to see them expanding even farther, so as things grow up in that area. And then also along with Mayor, Mayor Protem, Sunday evening at the orchards. The, oh, and Mr. Freitag also at the Grand Monora lighting at the orchard, so. And the wind wasn't blowing, so it wasn't miserably cold. That was the week.
Yeah, if I can follow up on the WEDA questions? Okay, I guess I'm a poor question asker because I didn't get the understanding that I needed to out of it. And there are two components to it, one is revenues, where we got the money from. And then the other is expenditure, where is it going to? So like, I asked, how much is the current balance on the GCIF fund?
Let me first address the counselor's question, Mr. Freitag, if I may. Larry Dorr, Chief Natural Officer and Deputy City Manager, thank you. We have before you tonight this resolution action that will bring an omnibus number of activities for the Westminster Economic Development Authority. And I'm also joined here by Director of Economic Development, Lindsay Kimball, and her team, who can answer additional questions. Let me just first start perhaps for the residents at a very high level that many years ago, the city committed to the redevelopment of the Westminster Mall. And with that, a financial plan to carry forward its redevelopment that included various revenue streams and expenses going forward. We've addressed a number of questions, but the gist relates to funds coming from the city, as has been planned and undertaken for a number of years. And as has been approved in the 22 and 23 Capital Improvement Plan for the city to transfer funds to WEDA for various activities. So that's sort of the high level in, in the city's budget in a couple of places that is enumerated and describes the various development activities, professional services, consulting activities and so forth, that are anticipated to take place in the downtown urban renewal area. With that, I'll let Lindsay Kimball talk about some of the details and the existing balance that's there. Because as is keeping with many of the city's financial objectives related to capital projects, we often take a pretty conservative pay-as-you-go philosophy where we'll accumulate some funds over a period of time and then expend them when opportunities arise or when needs are immediately presented. So hopefully that gives a little bit of a flavor and a background for the big picture. And then Lindsay, if you could describe the balance and maybe a few objectives for the funds.
Sure. So Counselor, our available balance is $2,964,532. That's our available balance.
And this is the GCIF fund?
This is the URA WEDA fund balance.
I'm asking about the GCIF fund.
If I could real briefly, both the Westminster Economic Development Authority and the City of Westminster, each separate financial entities, each have a general capital improvement fund. So what Lindsay was addressing is the general capital improvement fund within the Westminster Economic Development Authority. So I just want to make sure that that's a record.
I mean, this is the number two. Because you sort of answered that with number one, because you actually put a, a listing of things in there. But this is for number two. So this is the GCIF fund for the city.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I don't have that number right at hand, so we'd, we'd have to follow up. But the general capital improvement fund of the city would have a substantially larger fund balance and is accumulating cash on hand for projects that are anticipated to be a number of years in the future. I can say that for the replacement of the Westminster Municipal Court, there are multi, more than a million dollars on hand for pay-as-you-go type projects and all of the very substantial projects, citywide funds set aside for street maintenance and repairs and so forth. So I beg your pardon, I didn't understand that that was the question because this primarily relates to the Westminster Economic Development Authority, but we can follow up with that.
But it says that the, the city's General Capital Improvement Fund, which should be in the neighborhood of what, 30, 40 million dollars?
It could be in that kind of neighborhood, yes. Ms. Kimball just described the general capital.
Right, right, right. Well, that was question number one. This is question number two. Okay, so we're actually taking nearly a million dollars from the city's General Capital Improvement Fund. And this is money that was really collected, two-thirds by sales tax and a third by all the rest of the taxes. And money we put aside in this savings account that we call GCIF.
Well, the GCIF is funded with annual recurring monies that come from those.
Sales tax and.
From all of those sources you just described. And then, yes, for a number of years, the city's General Capital Improvement Fund has transferred recurring funds. The 22 budget calls for $475,000, the 23 budget calls for an additional $475,000. That combined is the $950,000, that's a part of this action of the WEDA tonight. We're just kind of taking care of the two calendar years at once. And then the project that's described in the Capital Improvement Plan in the city's budget sets forth that that would continue on out into the future for the full period of the Capital Improvement Plan. That's set forth and there's a description on page 243 of the city's budget. And it's also enumerated year by year on page 219 of the city's budget. So those funds have been, we could go back and show you that those funds have been transferred for at least the last decade or more to help accumulate the balance that Ms. Kimball just addressed within the Westminster Economic Development Authority.
And Larry, if I could also add, I don't mean to overcomplicate, but let me try and simply put it. Our GID, separate from URA, is collecting an increment, but that increment is swept by WEDA. WEDA then transfers it to the GID. The GID transfers, in fact, this coming year, 2023, will transfer $600,000 to the general fund. So that's a little bit of a transfer governmental accounting exercise as well. To Larry's point that there's, there is money going out, there is money being taken from the GCIF. But a lot of that is coming and being generated by the increment within downtown, that helps.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get a handle on.
Yes.
Is we seem to be transferring money back and forth. And I really don't have an understanding of what's going on with that. And when it comes to the GID, the GID gets a different sales tax. So doesn't Jefferson County, after they collect it, pay it directly to the GID, which is a separate legal entity?
Sir, it's my understanding that both our URA and our GID, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, are only property tax base.
Right.
We did not, we did not TIF the sales tax.
Right. And that's why Jefferson County collects it. But don't they pay the GID directly to the GID, which is its own separate legal entity?
Maybe we're not connecting here, but all of this is.
GID is the General Improvement District. And it's a separate legal taxing authority.
Sale, excuse me, property tax.
Right, right. So Jefferson County collects it.
The property tax.
With the treasurer.
Yes.
And then he takes a small portion of it and turns the rest over. Doesn't he pay that to the GID?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we were, we were just describing.
Okay. So then when we talk about on the property tax increment, when it goes, the current budget is $445,000 and the change is $475,000. This came from where? Where did the $475,000 more than what we budgeted for? I'm looking to the actual item on the WEDA getting those numbers. And I didn't ask this in my questions, the five questions I have.
Yeah, hold just one second. I think that's underlying, and I'm gonna ask Vicky Adams to join me down at the table just to make sure that I get this correct. But yes, this is under Westminster Center Urban Reinvestment Plan area and the increment relative to the GID. And what that involves is, if I, if I have this correct, and Vicky will be joining me in just a minute, but when the GID was established, the.
I thought this was a TIF.
No, no, this is sort of the base imposition of the tax that, that the General Improvement District imposed. The idea is that then its increment is being captured by WEDA, but then transfers back to the GID for its various purposes, some of which include reimbursing the city for its various investment. Vicky, do you want to add to that? Did I generally get that correct?
I believe Jefferson County will give the GID the base property tax. Anything about that goes to the URA. And then we have an agreement in the URA with the GID to give those property taxes back to the GID.
Okay, I'm looking at line four on the WEDA sheet. And it says, current budget $445,000. And it says change $475,000. Now, it says property tax increment, that's why I thought it was a TIF. So is this the TIF or is this the GID? Because those are two separate entities.
This is the TIF going back to the GID.
Why is the TIF being given to the GID?
Because there's an intergovernmental agreement with WEDA, the URA, and the GID to give them back their increments, which is the TIF back to the GID.
I guess I still don't understand. Don't we get paid the property taxes in like June or July? You know, we get them every month.
Yeah, I mean, the majority come in, in April and June. But then we get trickled in amounts for people that pay late.
Yeah, but I'm sure the $475,000 is not a trickle-in amount.
Some pay early, believe it or not, too. But no, what this omnibus year-end does is capture what we've actually collected versus what we anticipated. This year, there was a particularly, there was a larger unanticipated increase. In other words, the increment was $920,000 versus what we originally thought was more like $45,000 because of the significant taxable development that's happened in the downtown. Is that fair, Vicky?
Yeah.
So we're just adjusting this budget for those transfers, all of which fit into the original financial plan for accomplishing the downtown.
Okay. Now let's go to the expenditure side. And in the last one, the last itemized number, it has WERP City Participation CIP. That's where we're sending $950,000, which we took from the General Capital Improvement Fund for courthouses and water systems and sewers and streets. And sent it to just the new downtown. Okay, what's that being spent on? I know there was an answer, but I didn't understand it.
Ms. Kimball, that, that's the balance that you just described a moment ago on some of the objectives for the, for the project.
Correct. So this provides for any capital improvements for downtown, could be streets, could be other pieces of infrastructure that are needed. It also helps us pay to maintain that infrastructure once it's in place. So just like the rest of the city, you have to maintain your roads and your sewers and your parks and your everything else. We have to do the same thing downtown, so that's the city's participation. But I also want to point out that $600,000 number that I mentioned, it was a transfer from the GID, which came from WEDA, back out to the city. It comes back to us to pay for these capital. So it's, it's circuitous, I know, but it's, it's just the accounting that we are, we are operating with right now.
So, so what's the $950,000 extra dollars, which we hadn't budgeted for, going to be spent on?
Yeah, one of the things that we've done, I can, I can take that in terms of the operation of things. The $672,881, which is probably the place to start to tell the whole story. Those were funds that were appropriated from the city to credit to the Economic Development Authority that were transferred over at the end of '21 and were present for the '22 budget that were appropriated for the various things that Ms. Kimball just described. The 2022 and 2023 transfers were appropriated on the city side, but we now, those funds have been transferred and are complete. But now we want to appropriate those two $475,000 transfers for the various purposes that were just described. So this is just on the Westminster Economic Development Authority's books, reciprocating to what's happened on the city's books. That's what this is.
And we've run out of time, so thanks.
We've got 10 minutes.
I have 6:55.
Well. Let's get this finished.
So sorry, but I'd like to introduce John Burke, and we do have very specific line items that he's going to describe.
Sure, let me, I'll talk to two different buckets. First was the $950,000. $475,000 in 2022, capture what was already budgeted. And then $475,000 in 2023, anticipated to be budgeted. Those are primarily consultant fees and if necessary for the development. So things like with Martin Martin, all the surveys, all your due diligence documents, Lermi Companies in that same number, Moltz and Associates, our legal team from Malcolm Murray to Dan Minzer. Those are right around that $470 or less every year. We also have one-time fees for some of the lead consultant we have as well, or special studies. So environmental issues we run into, so that's what that, $950 is two years' worth of consultant fees. Okay, the second item was the capital side of things, it went from, you know, it was 2.6 to 3.4. That's about four different projects we have currently in the queue that are either in design or will be coming before this board in council later next year. One of those would be the Ollie and Waterline Project to serve the Marsight Fine Foods that'll run from Harland to Westminster Boulevard. That's hovering right around a million dollars. Uh, that's hovering right around a million dollars for that infrastructure. Another one would be Ninety-second and Eden Street to serve the townhomes. They'll be fronting on Eden Street, so the block C seven and B six. Uh, that frontage, we're looking at Ninety-second modifications. That's about another, uh, one point seven million dollars for that project. A lot of infrastructure with that one. Uh, third one would be signage, wayfinding, and streetlights in downtown. I was just driving through there. So we still have a number of streetlights to put on like Eden Street. It's really dark right now. And so those will be continually added with phase development as we move forward. Uh, another one is maintenance of areas around J C Penney. We own the properties, so we're responsible for maintaining the safety and security of that area as well. Uh, so that's about another two hundred thousand. All in, those first projects I just mentioned, about three point four million. Uh, again, those will all be fully designed and brought to this board and council for consideration at a later date. Uh, in addition to that, something we've been working on for, you know, off and on a number of years, is the potential, uh, potential joint venture with a developer to build a garage with condominiums uh, behind the Almo Draft House or other proximal locations of that. And that could be anywhere from eight to ten million dollars. Again, we don't want to ask for the money until we're ready. Uh, this year, we have about three point four million that we're in the queue. We've been working on, we're anticipating bringing forward next year. Thank you, my pleasure.
I went to several meetings last week and Saturday night, um, city manager and I went to the Armory in Brighton to the Nepali Un cultural diversity, um, event, and it was wonderful. We got to meet some of the mayors from around the area. But I need to get my notes out. I assume it'll be off of the stove so that I can get to the computer to write my notes up. It's just that NADA, you just need to understand, like, with the E A A, E I A that's coming out for two seventy, because the government wants more of a, of an assessment, the bridge is, is, is bad. It's worse than an F, and so it has to be replaced. And if they replace it, they have to do it as is. So that makes no sense, that's stupid. We know it needs to be bigger. So there's just so many issues. I have all those notes. I promise I'll write you so that you know what's happening with C dot and the craziness going on and red tape and all of the fun stuff.
Excuse me, is that buried at Bosque's?
Yeah.
Yeah, what a mess.
Yeah, so, um, and we were gearing up, getting ready to go when we go in February. These are the kinds of things that we need to tell our representatives. Don't waste money, let's use money efficiently. And I know we need to go, but I promise I will get that done before Christmas. Okay.
Good evening, welcome to December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with the peace and justice of God.
Roque, please. Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to the minutes of December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any further comments or changes? Roque, uh, if, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to public comment. While we're waiting, I will just remind us that, um, people do have five minutes. At the end of that, I would, um, remind you gently that your time is up. Disruptions are prohibited, threats and intimidations are prohibited, signs are prohibited. Uh, we like to maintain a fire code of occupancy and limits for safe exit. Uh, and during a council meeting, members shall endeavor to refrain from their electronic communications on subjects at the meeting. And. Just checking. Also, because the acoustics in this room, if you want to whisper, talk, or whatever, please go outside the doors and have your conversations. Microphone's open. Thank you. Um, we have no one to speak live, but we do have one voicemail. Okay. Eighteen oh one, that brings us to the city manager Freitag's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and counselors, members of the, uh, community that have joined us this evening, and anybody who might be watching online. We'll go ahead and begin with, uh, a few slides just to spin everybody up on what's going on in the city. So, uh, first thing there, uh, is the twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Annual Performance Evaluation Report. It's a mouthful, um, but it is now posted for review. And so if anybody in the community would like to review that document, um, you're welcome to do so. It's at WestminsterEconomicDevelopment.org. Um, and so that is, uh, is up there on the city's website, um, under economic development. Uh, the other thing, you'll see a little map off to the right, um, with some color shading. Uh, what that is, is, uh, the city contracted with, um, a, an organization to help us identify areas within Westminster, um, which frankly don't have a lot of trees. And so if we're going to focus on planting trees within our community, where should those areas be? That map to the right, um, is a, is a essentially a graphical depiction where, uh, we have fewer trees, lighter shades, fewer trees, darker shades, um, uh, well-forested at this point. And so, um, we do have, uh, that information, and that will then help to, uh, promote and schedule our tree planting program, uh, as we move into the out years. Um, next thing on homelessness, as we get ready for, uh, our cold stint that's coming up here Wednesday night into Thursday, just want to remind, um, the community that, uh, we do have city navigators. Um, they are out there right now issuing, um, hotel vouchers. Our public safety personnel are distributing cold weather gear to anybody who might be out, along with some supplies. And our parks rangers continue to conduct wellness checks on those folks who choose to remain outdoors. But, uh, we remained actively engaged in attempting to assist our homeless population across the city and just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of tracking on some of those efforts. Next slide. Um, wanted to talk about a Westie win. And so Sherri Spotkey from, uh, the J P D wins the P I O Moment of Excellence Award. Um, and so the Emergency Services Public Information Officers of Colorado recognized investigator Spotkey for the P I O Moment of Excellence Award. And this award was awarded specifically for outstanding work where she was supporting her peers when tragedy strikes. Um, there is a write-up there. I, you know, I thought it was very appropriate to include that. But always the first one to show up to assist. Her experience is well-respected throughout Colorado, and her peers wanted to show their appreciation of her professionalism and dedication. We're lucky to have her and her agency to allow her to embed herself with those of us in need from the board. And so, um, just a, uh, another testament to the great, uh, you know, team members that we have on the city staff and in specific, uh, within the Westminster Police Department. So, um, wanted to recognize her as a Westie win this evening. Next slide. Uh, some things to know, uh, it's a quiet week generally. So special permits and license board meeting goes this Wednesday, the twenty-first, from seven to eight thirty P M. right here at city council chambers. Environmental Advisory Board goes Wednesday, the following week, December twenty-eighth, from six thirty to eight P M. City Hall C M O Conference Room. Um, for the community, this is important, a free fitness week, so January first through the seventh of the new year. So recreation centers, um, will provide free fitness. Uh, cityofwestminster.us slash Free Fitness Week for more detail. So nice thing for folks to take advantage of, especially in light of all of the New Year's resolutions that will come out the night of the thirty-first and early morning the first. Um, our next city council meeting is a study session, and it's on Monday, January ninth, at six thirty here. And that's because January second is a, um, is a city holiday in recognition of January first. Next slide. And I did want to highlight the holiday closures, um, that are upcoming. So Saturday, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth. So all of our recreation centers, um, will close at three P M. Stanley Lake Regional Park will close at five thirty P M. Libraries are closed that day. Christmas Day, uh, Sunday, the twenty-fifth, all city facilities are closed. And then on Monday, City Hall will observe that Christmas Day break. Um, so City Hall will be closed on the twenty-sixth. Uh, New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, all recreation centers are closed at three P M. Stanley Lake Regional Park closes at five thirty P M. Libraries remain closed that day. And then New Year's Day, January first, it's a Sunday. City Park Fitness Center, Westview Recreation Center, and the Swim and Fit are open, but it's limited hours. City Park Recreation and Westminster Sports Center are closed. Uh, and then Stanley Lake Regional Park, main gates are closed. There is free parking lots are open, libraries remain closed. And then City Hall, again, will observe Monday, the second of January, um, as the, the New Year's holiday. So next slide. And then as we wrap up, uh, want to wish everybody a very, very happy holidays and a wonderful twenty-twenty-three. Look forward to seeing you at that next meeting, January ninth, if not before. Um, we are interested in you contacting us. And so, um, if, uh, you want to give us a call, please call us at three zero three six five eight two thousand six. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, check us out, uh, on Instagram, uh, or, uh, connect with us on next door. There you go, always forget that one. But anyway, uh, that's all I have there. Uh, pending any questions, and then next slide. Uh, there is an information-only item for the council's information on the dog licensing program. Um, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those also. Any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Normella?
Just made me think of, when, when are we thinking of having another council outreach event? Is that going to be?
That's a very good question, and I have, I don't know what a council outreach event is. I'm still learning, so that's new to me. Um, let me look to the audience and see if anybody is looking like they're raising their hand.
Like a town hall.
Nor, normally, we as a council need to discuss that. And a great thing to, we have a study session coming up the ninth. We can certainly put that on the agenda and start looking at it.
Okay.
I had the same thought. Yeah. Any other questions? Perfect, um, thank you. And council comments, anyone? Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, whatever you do celebrate. Um, right before this council meeting in the afternoon, I continue my second annual, uh, tradition of I selected five randomly selected residents, and I just gave them gifts and just talked to them. Um, I would encourage everyone to just talk to your neighbors. It's a good time to leave your house, go next door, and just get to know one another. Um, as you can see, people need help, and many people won't ask for help. So you, you never know unless you talk to them. So that's my message would, would, would be to reach out and just do good wherever you can. Thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Thank you, uh. So absolutely, uh, happy Hanukkah, happy solstice, happy Festivus, happy Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, and happy New Years. It's a good time of year. Uh, over the last week, I was, uh, thinking and came to a, uh, I don't want to think of it as a eureka moment, but that works as well, an epiphany. Uh, as you've probably heard me say before, the way we get lied to is truth needs both accuracy and proportion. And rarely do we get lied to in accuracy. But we get misled, we get lied to in proportion. Uh, sometimes it's by omission, leaving out something that's very important. Most of the time, it's by, uh, overstating a risk. Like the risks of COVID would be a perfect example. Even though there were voices at the time saying this, they were ignored. Even though there were voices at the time saying this, they were ignored. But COVID is only a risk to a very small part of our population. And instead of focusing on that, we had people going to the grocery store and washing their groceries when they got home. Very unfortunate. But there's other ways where really proportion is vitally important. That's what occurred to me this last week. As most people may know, this council and the individuals on it have spent a lot of time with Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Immunity Noise Council. Lots of time. By not only this council, but by certain members of the council. And even if this council chose to contribute, we're only talking about $10,000 or $12,000. And yet, we spent multiple hours doing it. And when we compare that to something, say, like the WIDA example, where we're going to be talking about this evening, the amount of money that WIDA is going to allocate is 200 times the amount of money we might give to the Rocky Mountain Noise Roundtable. Shouldn't we be spending more time with that? And we only have a limited amount of time. But in my mind, we should be spending far more time trying to understand this council's expenditures of tens of millions of dollars than we do. It's almost like we're getting sidetracked, and our time is going down the hole on these rather minimal items, instead of spending our time on the major challenges that our community faces. And the Rocky Mountain Airport Immunity Noise Roundtable is a perfect example. First of all, it's voluntary. We're under no obligation to participate. We are attempting to participate because we want to support our sister community. But somewhere in this, we've forgotten that this is voluntary, and this roundtable has no power whatsoever. None. Zero. We have a responsibility, but only in terms of our citizens, and the noise and the problems that they have to endure because of the airport. The entity with the most responsibility, and I underline for emphasis, the only one with authority, is the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. And yet, they seem to want to duck their responsibility. They don't want to use their authority. And this lack of action on their part has caused other members of, okay, the community roundtable try to step up and fill that void, which of course, they can't do because they have no authority. This council has lots of authority on lots of areas, and they have to do with money. And I implore my colleagues, let's spend more time about where our money goes, not worry as much about these other items. Thank you.
Anyone else? Your pro tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to take a moment and first thank all of our staff, our new city manager, his deputies who kept the city running for the last year. The city has been through a lot of transition in the last 18 months. And so I think that the folks that work for this organization deserve some gratitude. And this will be our last meeting before the new year, and I'm excited for what's ahead of the city, both the council, the leadership, the whole organization. There's a lot to do still. We had to figure out what we're going to do with the water plant. City manager gets to hire three more directors of departments from HR, Public Works, to the Police Department. So there's no shortage of things for us to still do, but I want to make sure that I took time and thank those folks, as well as thank our Public Works and our Police and Fire Departments, who will be working through the holidays as they always do when duty calls. So I want to say that I appreciate those folks. And then I want to take a quick second to think, or say Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. As I go and celebrate Christmas and the birth of my Savior, Jesus Christ, other people are celebrating other holidays, such as last night, we got to join Rabbi Benji at the Orchard Town Center, as they did the first night of Hanukkah, and did a lighting. We got to see some juggling with fire, which was pretty neat. It was, they also did recognition of Jessica Ridgeway's loss with her family. And Sarah Ridgeway, the mom of Jessica, got to light the menorah for them. And it was, it was an interesting celebration, and I wanted to share this with folks because I thought it was interesting, because I went to a kind of pre-Christmas service at where I go to for my place of worship, and they talked about being the light in the world. And so often, especially in the last couple of years, as things have been so divisive in our country, it's easy to forget that and to just focus on what we disagree about, and what I hate about the other folks that might be talking, or the talking heads. And our minister shared about being the light and really looking at that. The change is being kind of the Goliath and David and Goliath kind of situation, but you can do your part to be that difference maker, even if it's just a little bit of light in the world. And I thought it was interesting, because last night, the Rabbi Benji shared pretty much the same story. And he told the story of Hanukkah, and how the Israelites at the time were under rule of the Syrian army, and they basically drove them out. And there was a miracle of Hanukkah, if you know that, he shared that story. And he shared basically the same thing, that we can be the light in this world, and really, it's our duty to be this light, the light in this world. And you think about that, that whole thought process, and it reminded me of what Dr. Martin Luther King said, which is darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that, and only love can drive out hate. I'm summarizing that a bit, but you get the point. I think that's a really interesting message, and I think it's interesting to think of diverse groups, from Christianity to Judaism, and how we all really want that same thing, and that is to be able to have a happy world. But that takes each one of us. And so I wanted to share that tonight because it really hit me in a certain way, as a reminder of why I even do this. It's about making a positive difference in our community. And we all have different ways that we think that that should happen. But certainly, we should remind ourselves about why we do this, and it's about making a better future for our kids in this country. So with that, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing you in 2023.
Anyone else? I wanted to remind people listening and people here that might know anybody, Tri-City has, Baptist has their last food bank tomorrow, 2:30 to 4:30. There are no questions asked. The only thing they need to know is your household, how many people live there, and your address. That's it. And when they started out, they were averaging around 250 household members they were helping. COVID hit, and that raised to 750, up to 1,000. With inflation happening, it hit at our last food bank, 1,333. So I knew they're having trouble getting certain things. So I called up and asked, because I always, this time of year, for me, I want to always give the eggs, the flour, the sugar, so people can bake. That's where I come from. But they said they needed the canned goods, and to the Fire Department, they gave with their gathering that they just had, they gave a lot of canned goods to them, and they are so very thankful. But it was cereal, if I could get any eggs. And I found 12 dozen eggs that I could get for them today. That was it. And what was it? Oh, pasta and canned goods. So my, back of my car looked crazy, and Target, because Target gives to them if they have something that's going to expire. They do have freezers, so they're able to take it so that people do get meat. And so when I go to do it, I always tell the Target folks, I'm here giving to a food bank because you give to them, and it's a full circle, so I can spend my money here, and you keep going because you keep giving. And because the person that always fills my trunk and comes out, I preorder it. "Ma'am, isn't this a lot of cereal for you?" So I tell the story, and he always goes, "Wow." So it's helping everybody know the story. But tomorrow is the last day for this year, and then they'll start up in January again. And I too want to say to staff, and I wish, I'm glad not more have to be here tonight. It's so close to Christmas. But to staff, any of you listening, as you talk to your staffs, last year, sitting here for the first time in a while, we had some big challenges ahead of us. And it's been messy. It's been at times frustrating. It's been at times tearful. But you know who you are. That stood me back up and said, "We can do this." And we did. And to the liaisons that have to help all seven people here with the different things that we represent, and that's extra time for you, just all of you, in every single way, have done something to make us today successful. We have a city manager on board, and we welcome him and look forward to next year. And great things ahead. I will be happy when we can talk water stuff and share with public where we've been over this last year, because a lot of ground has been covered in a year. But all's I hope for each and every one of you is you enjoy your families, friends, food, laughter. Take some time to relax. Even my husband said, Sunday night, "You realize you haven't done anything today? I've seen you sit." So to all of us, take time to renew, and it'll be good to be back January 9th. But Ms. Abbey, I think that maybe you'll have to call us, because after two weeks, we might forget to come back. So Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to everyone. And with that, do we have a motion for Councilor's Bill 63? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 63 on first reading, providing a supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2022 opted budget of general and general fund stabilization reserve, golf course enterprise, Legacy Ridge Golf Course, parks, open space, and trails, general capital improvement, and Community Development Block Grants and Funds.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councilor's Bill 63. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Baker? Mayor Pro Tem DeMott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Naramella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Counselor's Bill Number 64. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 64 on first reading, approving a first amendment to lease between the City of Westminster and Highland Hills Park and Recreation District as landlord, and top one incorporated DBA Bender's Bar and Grill as tenant to extend the term of the lease to operate the restaurant concession in the ice center at the promenade through December 31st, 2023.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselor's Bill Number 64. Is there any further questions? Roll call, please. Mayor Pro Tem DeMott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Naramella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Mr. Frankel, do we have reason for executive session at the conclusion of the WIDA meeting?
We do, Mayor. And prior, excuse me, prior to adjourning as council and going into the WIDA agenda tonight, I would ask that council consider a proposed executive session to have a discussion of a personnel matter, a discussion of the 2023 goals specific to the city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge, pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 111.3(c)(1) and Colorado Revised Statute 246402(4f)(1).
I will go down the line asking if council concurs that we should go into executive session. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Naramella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Mayor McNally, yes. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, we have consensus that we will go into executive session. It is now 7:31, and I adjourned this meeting. And...open the Westminster Economic Development Authority Special Meeting for December 19th, 2022, incorporating the roll call from the previous meeting. And we have a motion for WIDA minutes of November 14th, 2022. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the WIDA minutes of November 14th, 2022, as presented.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 14th, 2022 of WIDA. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to public hearing for the Westminster Economic Development Authority Supplemental Appropriation to the 2022 Budget. City Manager, do we have anybody, any staff that's going to present? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak? I will close the public hearing at 7:32. And do we have a motion? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 224, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Westminster Economic Development Authority Budget.
It's been moved and seconded to, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Emmons?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution 224. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
Thank you. I will be voting no on this. I don't think we've given proper consideration to the funds we're spending. Part of me is still stuck on our December 5th meeting, where for the first time, I was told that back in 2014 and 2015, that we planned on losing $60 million at the New Downtown. I had never heard that before. Ever. And I was opponent to what was going down at the New Downtown. If I had been aware that we planned on losing $60 million, that would have just been ammunition to my point. I think this is the elephant in the room, or the gorilla in the room, or whatever huge animal that we seem to be ignoring. I view the New Downtown as a failure. A lot of that is based on my previous four years on council, where I saw wonderful ideas pop up and then collapse and fade away, beginning with Oliver McMillan. But there were some before that that I was just told stories about. But Oliver McMillan, we spent a lot of time with, and it collapsed and tumbled away. And then we got the new one. And I don't know if I can truly go down the list of failures at that, because I don't know how many are confidential. Well, there's more than one. And everyone came to us with all these glowing recommendations, and how this was going to be good, and blah, 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 blah. And they didn't work. They didn't work at all. And even though we have experts with credentials and experience, I'm looking at results. And the results of our New Downtown are rather meager. And I'm being kind. And even this council, in a previous council, backed away from next urban center of the Colorado Front Range. But I think it's time that this council stop the Pollyanna, stop the arrogance and pride that we have in ourselves and our organization, and truly come to grips with the difficult mess that that downtown is. and truly come to grips with the difficult mess that that downtown is. We've gone through years when Denver, Colorado, and the Front Range was one of the hottest real estate markets in the country. And we get meager results. And now we're going into perhaps an economic situation that will not be as conducive to development. And the time clock is running on the tax increment, which, of course, was a horrible thing to do. And even though I had a disagreement from one of our lawyers, I went back and looked at the Colorado law. The only way you can condemn and make an urban renewal area and do a TIF, let me remind everyone, a TIF takes money from the county. That is not backfill. They lose it forever. For 25 years, they're supposed to run the jail and the sheriff's department and the social services without that money. And it takes money from the schools. And even though up to 27 mills is filled by the Colorado Legislature, which, of course, takes money from higher education in prisons and everything else like that, the rest of it is taken by a secret tax increase on the taxpayers of whatever school district they're in. There's real hurt in TIF and urban renewal. The Colorado law says it has to be a growing menace, menace to the state of Colorado, which it was not. So I urge my colleagues, let's get serious, and let's look at numbers, and let's stop believing these, and I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be voting yes in favor of this because it's time to look ahead.
Counselor Normella?
I will also be voting yes, and I just want to set the record straight with respect to, you know, staff having assumed that there would be a $60 million loss. That is not the, the fact nor what I mentioned a week or two ago. So I just stated the fact that after negotiating with, with master developer and after going through what it would take to get the vision, that was the result that the city was going to have to begin. So the city decided not to go in that direction. So again, I think staff over the years have made very strategic decisions about this site. And, you know, the, the TIF, the philosophy behind tax increment financing is that there is not any revenue coming in off of a site, which our mall was not bringing in revenue. And I think that, you know, we can, when we do have the downtown project brought back to us, I think in the spring, it would be a helpful reminder to just look at what was the site generating? What is this effort building for the city and for the county and the other districts over time? And the overall benefit that we'll all receive from that? So yeah, I think we're doing what we can on this site. And I, I look forward to future conversations we'll all have about how we just best set it up for success.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting yes for the obvious reasons that this project is not a failure. I think calling it a failure is disingenuous at best and divisive at worst. I think it's misleading, and I want all residents to know it's not even close. It's actually quite a success. And given the market dynamics of what's happening in our medical environment with the economics of everything and the supply and demand, we're doing really well relative to most peers. All peers in the state who have a similar project, who are trying to build out a similar type of downtown project. And it is a nationally recognized project, nationally awarded project. So when you hear people say things, I just hope that you all have the wisdom to research on your own, look at the facts, and just continue to engage with us as we learn more and as we build this thing out. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Couple of quick comments and why I'm going to be supporting this. I would say an important thing for people to realize, and I know that the mayor knows this because it's where I learned it from, the council, when they decided to do this and the city management at the time was very forward-thinking in the way that they diversified our tax base, that beforehand was heavily dependent upon that mall. And the city was smart in realizing that if that mall goes away, we have a big problem if we do not diversify our tax base. So you can look around the city from things to Walmart and other commerce centers that we do business at and buy goods that also supply the vital tax revenue for us to have police officers, firefighters, Public Works, streets, all the things that we need. The other thing I would mention, because I think it's relevant, is a dead mall provides no tax revenue. So nobody gets any tax revenue out of that, not the schools, not the city, not the county, nobody. So the other piece of that was the city was forward-thinking that that did not have to be redeveloped, and it could sit as dirt for many decades, and the city wouldn't be hurt. And that was the plan, not because they wanted to leave it as dirt, but because they wanted to not have to depend on it. So with that being said, they went through multiple iterations, and I agree, it's time to look forward from where we are. One thing that I think that we, we should be realistic as a council about going into the new year is we should listen to the residents as we approve anything that is developed in the downtown. And at some point, we need to stop looking at it as just one development. It is now multiple living blocks that are all, each being developed independently of each other. And, you know, what gets put on the rest of those blocks depends on what council approves that sits at these seats. So I think that's an important thing that we need to realize. And like or love some of the past decisions. I could go both ways on many of them, but I wasn't there for all of them, so I'm not going to throw stones. I do also want to be realistic that over the last four years, things were really going well for a couple of years, and then COVID hit. And whether you can have whatever opinions you want, but the reality is many things got shut down and development in that area and everywhere else got put to standstill. So it's really hard for me to judge everything that might have failed over the last couple of years based off of that because we don't know what happened. We never had to deal with that. So important things for the public to understand as we continue this conversation into the future.
Roll call, please. Board Member Baker.
No.
Or Vice Chair Demat.
Yes.
Board Member Emmons.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Normella.
Yes.
And Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. It is 7:44, and we will close this meeting and go to our post-meeting with an executive session. Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah.